Welcome to silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to presentation, the special event approvals. Item 3.1, this is the introduction of our Broward County School Board Member-elect, Maura Bowman, and this is sponsored by Commissioner James. It's a pleasure to have you here tonight, Mrs. Bowman. Hold on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we have a new school board member, Maura Bowman, elect for the school board seat, I'm sorry. And I wanted her to come up and just give us a little introduction and what she has learned so far and what her agenda is, especially for our district, as you know, there are a lot of important pressing issues, and give us some time to answer any questions or comments that we may have for her. So, I want to welcome school board member-elect Bowman to the city of Dana Beach.
Thank you, Commissioner James, and the City of Dana Beach Commission, and city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. Thank you for having me. It is my pleasure to be standing here, and it is a lot of the efforts of the people of Dana Beach and the support I've had. So, I have really enjoyed getting to know the people, knocking on doors, and talking about the issues. And I actually was just having a conversation with someone, and it was totally unprompted that I was coming here today, who was singing the praises of the city of Dana Beach and the way that they came together to support their public schools. And it is something, I was here for the commission meeting when that happened in April, when they talked about closing Olson. And it is so wonderful to know that we have you all as partners, and how devoted you are and dedicated to making sure that we're going to move in the right direction and keep our schools intact. So, where other people are complaining and talking about the negatives, the city of Dana Beach, city manager Garcia, who I've had the pleasure of meeting with, coming with solutions to the school board. It's amazing, this, you know, it's a cliche, but it takes a village. And to have the support of the city, working in conjunction with the school board, in making great education for our kids, and raising our next workforce and the next generation, is something that I'm just so happy to have in District One particularly. So, I'm looking forward to working with everybody, and really coming up with solutions. Dana Beach is growing. We have issues to address now, looking towards the future to make sure that we are ready for the growth and for all the kids that are going to be coming. So, thank you for having me.
Do you know if there are any important dates of what is next? I know that we have had a lot of redefining our school meetings, and a lot of things have changed. Have things changed since you were elected, and if so, what do we have to look forward to?
So, the most recent meeting was last week, on the 15th. They brought proposals, which included incorporating the newest proposals that the city brought in terms of for Olson, which is including having the Emergency Operations Center in there, and then partnering and doing the things that have been proposed by city manager at the, a couple of meetings before. What they did, what, there's going to be another workshop, they're going to be, but the good thing is that they are not going to be voting on the final decisions until the new school board is sworn in. So, that's happening, I think, on January 15th.
Okay. I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments for the school board member?
Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much, school member-elect, Maura Bowman. You know, you have us whenever you need us as well. Obviously, this is a new, brand-new position for you, and, you know, I know with your work ethic, you're definitely, I know you know probably more than the average bear a lot, right now, but we're here for you, and we know you're here for us. So, we, just you showing, coming up here tonight, showing up tonight means a lot to us. Definitely appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, this next item, this is my item. I think I'll go down, I guess, to the, I'll go, I'll go down and present it, right? I never dug before. Oh, it's nice to stand here. I think I've ever stood here before. All right, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city attorney, city clerk, manager, I stand before you today as the mayor of Dana Beach, and this is my item. And there's someone here that's been the mayor of Dana Beach two times before me. When she, you know, we're coming to our end as a commission, this commission. So, we're a unique group, you know, we're going to have one vacancy because Commissioner Tamara James, her time is up. But, you know, in her eight years, what she's accomplished, from what I've seen, has been monumental. It's been really impressive, what you've been able to accomplish here in your eight years. You know, your famous story is that you came up here complaining about, you know, not having a basketball gym, what, like nine, 10 years ago, and boom, look where we are, 10 years later, we're having that gym. It's very well on its way. But, it's not just that. It's many other things that you've done. It's the support that you've shown, and it's the grace that you showed me. You know, I'm learning that as mayor, you step down after two years and you become a commissioner. And I know that could, that could probably be difficult, but, you know, stepped down and becoming a commissioner, you've definitely did it with grace and with dignity, and you made me feel comfortable, and I really do appreciate that. And I know this whole commission appreciates you, the staff appreciates you, and most importantly, the city of Dana Beach appreciates you. So, I figured that I'd give you something, like a parting gift, you know, from me and the commission. And it says, "Presented to Commissioner Tamara James in recognition of your leadership and service to the citizens of Dana Beach and the Dana Beach City Commission from 2016 to 2024." And, yeah, it's, it's, it's like old school, you know, this is my, I picked this design. So, nice. It's a little different from our typical award, but I hope it's something that you can remember us by. So, yeah, come on down, present it, and then we'll take a picture, all of us. You want to say some words? Yeah, come on.
Why, thank you. Unique, and I like it. Listen, you have a better gavel situation than we did when I first got there. And so, it was very old, and, but it was historical. You would have loved to have it. It has, it has been my honor to serve the city for the past eight years. I won't go through all the accolades at this meeting, but it means a lot. You know, when you come, and we've all, everyone that's there has been on this side of the dais before. We know how it feels to just be a resident and really not have a seat at the table. I don't take it for granted, and I don't take it lightly, sitting on that side of the dais and really being ambassador for the city as far as when it comes down to our residents, and our employees, and our staff. And so, we've been through a lot of changes. We've had a lot of different changes within our staff and then within our community. But, if I had to do it over again, I definitely would do it. I think we need more people that are willing to not just complain about things, but to also put an effort into trying to change things. And when I got here, the leadership was very seasoned. And so, I am happy to see, you know, we are continuing to grow leaders to be able to make decisions for the city as it evolves. And so, thank you, Mayor. You're doing a fantastic job, and I'll still be here, and I'll still be letting you all know my grievances or things that I want to change. And who knows, you might see me again in two years.
I guess we go up there and take a picture, right? Or down here? Down here? All right, thanks again. Moving right along. We have requests for proclamation approvals. So, we have the National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, October 2024, sponsored by Commissioner Davis. Do I have approval? And Breast Cancer Awareness Month, do I have approval for both these proclamations? All right, we have approval. And I need a retroactive approval for the Key to the City, which was presented to Tyler Huntley on 10/17/2024, sponsored by me. No? Okay, I have approval. Thank you. And this, next item is Commissioner Davis's item, and this is recognition of Emily Daycock, the third annual Dana Point 5K Fun Run Under the Sun First Place Female.
I'll say, thank you, Mayor. I'll say a couple of words, and then I'll let you speak, Emily. Probably, it was three years ago, the city manager and I sat down with the team of Dana Point and created the 5K Fun Run Under the Sun in partnership with, with Dana Point. And, you know, we, some of us who follow you on social media, we see you run races all over the place, and, you know, we call you the queen, and we love to see you doing your thing and running 100 miles here, 50 miles there. But, there's nothing like being able to win in your own city. And so, I want everyone to know that not only did Emily win the very first place for the very first race that we did in 2022, she was only beat by Alice the second year. This is her second time winning first place overall female. She ran in the rain, she ran through the storm, and she killed it. So... There is nothing better than, than celebrating our own residents doing great things in our city, shining a positive light on, on the city of Dana Beach. So, thank you for being who you are. We know you run around your neighborhood, and you just are a beacon of light wherever you go, and we are all so, so very proud of you. So, we have a certificate for you, in appreciation for your first-place win. And if you'd like to say a couple of words, please go ahead before we take a picture.
Thank you for inviting me.
Pull the microphone down.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me, Joyce. It's a pleasure to be here and be supporting my city and, and, and getting other people to do the races as well. And without, without all the, without all the people, we wouldn't be able to have it. And I thank you for, you know, putting the event on and everything you do for our city, and even outside of the 5K, everything you do. And I actually, after, speaking of the 100 miles, I did, two weeks before the event, I ran 100 miles. So, I was just coming back, recovering from that. And to be able to run through those deep ankle puddles, and from the rain that we had that day was a little bit of a challenge, but that didn't matter. And, because doing those ultras, it makes, it makes us who, who we are, and we run, we're prepared to run in any conditions, rain, shine, snow. You, you name it. So, it's a, it's a blessing to be able to, to run in any, in any of those conditions. Thank you again.
And we just want to give a quick shout-out to Dad, because he came in second place overall male for his age group. So, she runs in the family, and shout-out to Dad. If you all want to come down and take a picture with Emily, and we're all going to take a picture. Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just real quick. So, just, for those of you who don't know, Emily runs and races, what, almost every weekend? Pretty, pretty close. Yep. So, almost every weekend, and she, and she almost always comes in first, or she does really, really well a lot of times. So, and she's also run in the Boston Marathon a couple of times. So, yeah, so, she's definitely one of our little celebrities here in Dana Beach. So, I'm really proud of her. I always am, and her parents are wonderful and always support her. And we were just talking about baseball, and her mom works at the baseball stadium, Marlin. So, yeah, Marlin Stadium. Anyways, anyway, so, just congratulations to all of you. Thank you. Yeah, we're going to take a picture, yeah, everybody. Yeah, we're gonna take a picture, yeah, everybody.
Okay, moving right along to proclamations. This is item 4.1. This is my item. This is for Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd through the 31st, 2024. This is a proclamation of the Office of the Mayor, City of Dana Beach, Florida, whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic them in. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administrative Agent, who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October 23rd to 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dana Beach City Commission, I, Archibald John Ryan IV, Mayor of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Dana Beach, and I urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. And I would like to present this, uh, proclamation to, uh, a young marine who's in the crowd, and his name is Axel Pache. Axel, would you like to say a couple of words?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, thank you so much, and this is a great deal for me and my unit. Um, what we're trying to do here is to obviously promote a healthy tree, uh, health-free, uh, drug-free lifestyle, uh, for my peers, for the members of my, of my unit, and the entire, uh, organization. And, um, that's, um, that's pretty much it.
All right. All right. Well, I'll come down there and present you with the, with the proclamation. Thank you. You guys want to take a picture?
Yeah, why not?
All right, come on, man.
Okay, guys.
You're interfering with Dad taking a picture. You want to get in? Who wants to get in?
There you go.
We're doing two.
My wife and I.
Oh, bring the wife and I.
Come on, uh, bring the whole family.
The Price is Right.
Grab my, grab my phone.
I got him shaking. There you go, one, two. I like his feature. I got it.
Can't complain, I mean, I can't let him off.
Okay, moving along. Our next proclamation for item 4.2 is Commissioner James's proclamation, and this is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Let me turn you on. Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This seems fitting. We went to the Breast Cancer, um, Awareness Event that the Chamber had in Dana Point at the Marriott. And so, um, while everyone, why doesn't everyone have on pink? I'm gonna read this proclamation that reads, whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of the disease and the importance of screening and early detection. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor those who have lost, lend our strength to those who carry on the fight, and pledge to educate ourselves and our loved ones about this tragic disease. And whereas there have been great strides in combating the devastating illness of breast cancer, which is the second most diagnosed form of cancer in the United States. And whereas death rates from breast cancer have been declining, and this change is believed to be the result of earlier detection and improved treatment. And whereas through the exact causes, though the exact causes of breast cancer are unknown, unestimating its risk factor is essential to prevention. And whereas those who have a personal, excuse me, or family history of breast cancer are among those at great risk of developing the illness. And whereas early detection and getting recommended screening, mammograms to help detect breast cancer early is key in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas this month, we stand with those who have been affected by breast cancer, and we recognize the ongoing efforts of dedicated advocates, researchers, and health, healthcare providers who strive each day to defeat this terrible disease. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of Dana Beach, our Mayor of the City of Dana Beach just hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Dana Beach, and encourage everyone to educate themselves of the risk factors and get the recommended screenings. And this goes for you two men.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner James. Up next, uh, for item 4.3, we have a proclamation sponsored by Commissioner Joyce Davis, and this is National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month.
Thank you, Mayor. October's a busy month. Uh, whereas domestic violence is pervasive, is a pervasive issue that transcends all ethnic, racial, and socioeconomic boundaries. And it is a pattern of behavior involving physical, emotional, sexual, or economic abuse perpetrated by an intimate partner. And whereas the home, a place intended to be a sanctuary, is often the site of domestic violence, making it a hidden crime with devastating impacts on individuals, families, communities, right here in our own city. And whereas each year in the United States, more than 10 million women and men experience physical abuse by their intimate partner, and 90% of children of domestic violence victims are eyewitnesses to these attacks, which may be a major precursor to fatalities from child abuse and neglect in the U.S. And whereas October is designated as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month to raise awareness about this critical issue, encourage prevention efforts, and support survivors. And whereas our law enforcement officers and victim advocates are committed to creating a safe, supportive environment for all residents, and to working collaboratively with community partners to prevent domestic violence and provide support to survivors. Now therefore, on the behalf of the City of Dana Beach Mayor, Archibald Ryan IV, and the City of Dana Beach Commission, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Dana Beach, and do express our sincere appreciation for those committed to promoting peace and preventing domestic violence in our community. And to accept this proclamation, we have Dr. Linda Parker, the President and CEO of Women in Distress. Uh, would just love for you to say a couple of words about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Uh, thank you for Commissioner Davis and for the, the full commission, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Um, you know, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a sobering reminder that we have a long way to go in domestic, domestic violence abuse. This is Women in Distress's 50th year. We're the first domestic violence center in the state of Florida and one of the first in the country that recognizes to be a huge issue. So while I'm pleased and blessed to be the, the CEO that represents and ushers us into the next 50 years, it's also very sobering to remember that the amount of progress we've made has been pretty minimal considering the amount of things that we've got going on. But Dana Beach has always been a good supporter of Women in Distress, and we really appreciate everything that you all do for us. So thank you very much for this proclamation. We're very happy to accept it.
Thank you.
Can we start the business now?
Okay, that concludes our proclamations. Moving on to our administrative reports, we'll start with our city manager, Madam Anna Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, members of our city team, residents who are here with us tonight and those watching at home. Wanted to give you a brief update. Uh, we have reached out to, um, the school board, um, the top administrators for this, uh, school board, particularly the superintendent, Dr. Hepburn and Dr. Wanza. There will be meeting with our Deputy City Manager and I November the 4th, um, in regards to the game plan for, for Olson and Collins Elementary, and all the ideas and initiatives, um, that we have discussed. Additionally, some of the things that came up at the meeting that we had at CW Thomas, um, to possibly partner for additional parking at CW. Um, so we're very excited, and we'll bring you, um, what occurs in that conversation, uh, that meeting, November the 4th. Um, we're very happy to announce, um, that the Southeast Drainage Project has commenced. When I was putting this report together, which is a week ago, we had already laid down, um, more than 200 linear feet of pipe. Um, our Deputy City Manager and I will be meeting with our, uh, Department Director Fernando Rodriguez, our City Engineer, Deputy, uh, Director of Public Services, Biweekly. Um, we, we have, we're dealing with some challenges. Um, the good news is that we will keep moving forward, um, but we've already anticipated, um, you know how construction is? Once you open, um, you know, we break ground. We're able to see some pipes that we thought that we could use that have some damage from, um, tree roots and things like that. So we will be coming with a full, comprehensive report either in December or January, um, to add some monies to that budget. Um, but we will continue to move forward, and by the time I, I give you the next report, we would have definitely laid way more than 200 feet of, um, of pipe. So we're excited about that. Um, I just wanted to let you know that the Executive Director of the Broward County Planning Council has reached out to me and the Mayor, um, with a letter that's included here, um, that the units that, that we applied for in the RAC have been approved, so we can move forward. Um, already Community Development, Eleanor and Corinne are working with new applications that will be forthcoming. Um, but again, everything was in place, um, for a city to be able to get the approval to move forward with the 4,000, um, new units. Um, Dana After Dark was a huge success. In spite of the weather, we had a tremendous amount of fun. Um, we were able to do some great initiatives, thanks to, um, our Director of Parks and Recreation, um, Cassie Warren, our Deputy Director Frankie Lazo, Ashley Vlasic, um, that the entire team did a fantastic job. And, um, already we are planning for more, um, events and to augment and enhance. We saw the VIP tent with, which was a really big hit. So we're very excited about, um, um, our entire series of Dana After Dark. So please make sure that you have calendared November the 16th, um, as the light up Dana Beach and our celebratory, um, 120th birthday celebration. That's gonna be a tremendous event, um, here at the City Hall campus. Um, the final elements of the IT Parker Community Center renovation project are being completed, and we are looking forward to the November 18th ribbon cutting. This is gonna be a really, um, exciting day as we open the doors to one of the most beautiful, um, places to rent here, ocean, I mean waterfront here in Dana Beach. So we urge you to come out November the 18th to IT Parker. And if you're thinking about planning a wedding, a baby shower, or any significant event, you will see that right here in your backyard. You're really going to have a really, really special venue for that. We officially closed out the historic $30 million Stormwater Revenue Bond, um, that is funding the Southeast Drainage Project. And I really want to, um, thank our Chief Financial Officer, um, Frank DePaolo, and our Deputy Director of, um, Finance, Jamie Guzman, and the team who worked very closely with us and with Eve. And it was a very celebratory event, and the Mayor joined us as we signed all the documents and continued to work together to move our city forward. Our hurricane preparedness and actions, uh, to make our city safe and assist our community were evident as we gave out more than 5,000 sandbags via our September 25th Drive-Thru Sandbag Event, as well as the delivery efforts that were led by our Deputy City Manager, um, where we delivered more than 1,500 additional sandbags door to door. Um, and just, I just want to emphasize that we take what we do very seriously. Whereas the majority of cities just dump some sand, and everybody's shoveling sand, and it's a mess. We have a drive-through operation where our residents just pop their trunk, and we have those sandbags neat and, and clean, and our, we put them in the trunk of the car. But we also went above and beyond to deliver those sandbags and working very closely with, um, Vice Mayor Llewellyn, who had a really good idea, um, to really look at our vulnerable population, and we'll be working closely with our Deputy City Manager and, um, our Chief of Fire, um, because we do have a list of individuals that may need this delivery, uh, as a permanent endeavor that we could do for them. Um, the construction project at CW Thomas Park, it just gives me such joy go by and see the tremendous progress, um, moving forward with great progress. To report, all field lighting have, have been installed, um, and the concrete slab for the gymnasium being poured the week of the 22nd, so this week. And every day we see, um, more progress, and we look forward to December of next year to do a really, really special and, and very significant ribbon cutting. Um, we look, we look close. Um, we look forward to closing our calendar year of 2024 with a bang, as I mentioned earlier, with the 120th anniversary. It has really been a challenging year, but it's been a year that together this city commission and this administration has really delivered, um, record amount of projects. You know, shovels on the ground, ribbon cuttings. And I want to tell you folks that the best is yet to come. We really look forward to a tremendous 2025 with the best team of public servants that, that have ever been assembled, and I take great pride in that. So this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome report. Awesome report, awesome report, manager. All right, up next, our city attorney.
Good evening, everyone. Just very quickly, I'm working on a series of contracts that will be coming to you in the December agenda, including finalizing the pit, which is the beach volleyball, so that's good. Additionally, I just wanted to also advise you that I'm preparing a training program with the assistance of Frank DePaolo, our finance direct, excuse me, CFO. So for employees that are not like your department directors, but all of the staff supporting employees, so they're aware of all of the pitfalls and what they should be looking out for when it comes to ethics and procurement. And that's it.
All right.
If I may have a point of privilege, I just, I just want to congratulate Mayor Ryan on a really remarkable, remarkable State of the City address. We really had a wonderful time, but acknowledging the work of his colleagues, the work that have been accomplished by the administration and the work of all the departments. Mayor, you hit it out of the ballpark with a grand slam, and thank you so much. We are very grateful for how you delivered.
Thank you. Couldn't have done it without the team, especially the State of the City Committee. Thank you all again. Appreciate everybody. I hope, hope the staff had a good time. All right. Okay. Now we're going to go to the city clerk with reminders.
Thank you, Mayor. Your next meeting is on November 18th, 5:15 you have the organizational meeting, and then shortly after that, at 6:15, you have your CRA Board meeting, and then you have your regular city commission meeting at 7:00 PM. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, clerk. All right, up next is our public safety reports, and we'll start with our BSO Police Captain,
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. So last Friday night, for the first time since I've been the chief in the city, and I think the first time since the city manager has been here, we did our first DUI checkpoint. A lot goes into that, a lot of planning, and that was, operation was to enforce Florida's DUI and traffic safety statutes, as well as promote roadway safety. Unfortunately, we had inclement weather, so it did put a damper on the amount of vehicles coming through, but even with that, we made three arrests, we issued 67 citations, one misdemeanor DUI arrest, three no insurance citations, 15 no driver's license citations, 14 vehicles were towed, and two other arrests, including one handgun was seized. In total, we had 41 law enforcement and civilian personnel assisted with our operation. We had 19 from the Broward Sheriff's Office, we had one from Department of Detention, and we also had 14 from other state and local law enforcement departments, from FHP, Miramar Plantation, Fort Lauderdale, and Coconut Creek. A lot, a lot goes into this planning-wise. Unfortunately, like I said, the rain kind of put a damper on the amount of vehicle traffic, but it's not about how many people we arrest. At the end of the day, it's about how much enforcement we do and how much we can teach in keeping the roadway safe. And at the end of the day, that's what we did. So it was a very successful operation. We look forward to do it again next year, and hopefully that'll be a better night with better weather. Last week, one of our deputies observed a vehicle driving recklessly through one of the neighborhoods. He followed it, and he conducted a traffic stop on it. Upon reaching, upon going up to the vehicle, he smelt marijuana, and once he got the driver out of the vehicle in plain view, he observed a bag of marijuana. The vehicle was field tested positive, the marijuana, and it was over 165 grams of marijuana, vite pens, several krill baggies, as well as crack cocaine. The suspect was placed in custody, he was charged with possession of marijuana with intent to distribute, as well as possession of cocaine. Again, last week, another one of our deputies observed a silver Ford traveling through our northwest section at a high rate of speed. He followed the vehicle, and the vehicle ended up going to the Motel 6. Upon making that traffic stop, he got the driver out of the vehicle. He placed him in custody because he didn't have a driver's license. In a search incident to arrest, we found seven grams of crack cocaine, two grams of powder cocaine, drug paraphernalia, and as well as a firearm. That subject was placed in custody and taken to the main jail. And the reason I wanted to hit on that today is because we just had one of our core meetings in narcotics was a big deal, so I wanted to hit on the narcotics enforcement that we're doing every day. We're getting many, many arrests for felon narcotics in our city, so I wanted to hit on that with the commission. I can also proudly say that we successfully had Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah in our city, and not a single issue at any of our religious institutions again this year. And a lot of planning goes in that too, because we make sure that we have our deputies at every single one of our religious institutions checking with the rabbis, checking with the congregation. A lot goes into that, and I know there's still a lot of fear with the war going on in the Middle East. So again, I'm very proud to say that our city did not have one single issue again this year, as we didn't last year. I'm also, also very proud to say that this has been a long-year process, but with the work of Deputy Manager Candido, wherever he is back there, thank you, sir, for the help, Eleanor and everyone, we got our first two fixed LPR pole cameras that have been placed in. So two of the 24, but the first two have been installed, and now they're going through the process to get the other 22 installed. But our first two, our first two are in the ground. So that's a big step going forward. We got the permitting done. This Friday night, we have the Fall Festival and the National Night Out of Law Enforcement at Frost Park from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I hope everyone will be there, and I hope we get the word out as much as we can, because I know we always have a great, great turnout. We'll have lots of resources there from the sheriff's office, and I know the kids love hanging out with all the toys and all the tools that we have, so we'll definitely have all that out there. Again, Eric and Taryn have set all that up, so that will be a really nice event Friday night. Hopefully, the weather will be nice. And last, I know we got the four new bodies that were coming in. We are, myself and Lieutenant Cooper, we did interviews last week, and we have selected our new traffic enforcement deputy, and that traffic enforcement deputy will be permanently assigned to that position beginning November 4th. That is a big, big step for us in the city, because we've only always had one traffic deputy, and with the growth of the city, that was something that myself and the city manager spoke about, and we knew we needed to address. And because of this commission and your support for law enforcement, we're now going to have our second full-time traffic deputy on the road, and that's going to be huge, because the amount of complaints that we're getting, it's just too much for just Deputy Wilson to handle. So November 4th, we'll have two deputies out there doing just traffic-related issues. So please, when you get them, let the city manager know, and she'll let me know, and that deputy will only be dealing with traffic-related issues. That will be his job all day. So Malaluka, Meadow Brooks, Southeast Fifth Avenue, Alpha Griffin, all these complaints I've been getting, every day, he will be hitting those areas. So I hope that will help with the complaints. And that's all I have for today.
Hold on, Captain. Commissioner James?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you for giving us the update on the narcotics. I do have a concern, or I guess I want to know what BSO is doing regionally or with all of the cities, but specifically with Dania Beach. If the recreation marijuana passes, how does that impact enforcement? How does that impact our parks? How does that impact everything that you all are doing?
I'll have to get back to you on that, because obviously, that hasn't passed yet. So if it did, that would obviously change the laws completely for us, so we would get guidance from our legal department. So I would tell you, let's sit and wait to see what happens for two weeks, and then I'll get the guidance on it. I don't have an answer yet, because it hasn't passed yet, so they haven't given us guidance on a law that hasn't passed yet.
I'm just not sure if it's something that we should be trying to have some type of, something to pass that will have teeth, because I know that we kind of went through this issue before when medical marijuana came out first, and you know, and people grandfathered in, or with Airbnbs when we weren't proactive enough, and then certain things we could or could not enforce. And so as a city, I just want to make sure that we are having back, back into conversations just in case, and you know, just to prepare for that in the case of. So maybe it's not thing with BSO, but maybe it's something that we need to get together with the city manager to see with our city, what are things that we should be looking towards to possibly have some type of enforcement that we can enforce in the city.
Well, I'll also reach out to our legal, our my, our general counsel attorney. I don't know if I'll have an answer yet, but at least ask him and let him know that the question was raised, and I'll see if he can give me a, an opinion at least.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
If I may, Mayor, just one thing. Obviously, it will still be illegal to drive under the influence, so that's not going to change. But the possession may change, and that's what we're going to have to look at.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. Great report. All right, up next, we have our BSO Fire Chief, Sergio Pelisser. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, city staff, and the great citizens of Dania Beach. So tonight, I'll just be brief. As the holiday season approaches, our fire department is increasing our community engagement to ensure that every child in Dania Beach experiences the joy of the holidays. We're going to have two toy drives this year. The first toy drive will be at the Dania After Dark Lightup Event, where we'll be hosting a fill-the-fire truck during the Dania After Dark event, and we'll have an empty fire truck where our community can donate unwrapped toys for children ages 3 to 18, as well as gift cards. Our firefighters cadets, and our life safety educator, myself, and our whole fire department team will be there to assist. On our second toy drive, we partner like we do every year with Dania Point and Five Below. And on November 29th, the day after Thanksgiving, this event will run from 10 to 4:00 PM. I just want to remind everybody, we want to support the needy families, both toy drive support on making sure that the needy families in Dania have a great holiday this year. So I encourage all our citizens to participate and all our citizens to show up at the Dania After Dark event. Again, I want to thank our partners, Dania Point, Five Below, because they always stand behind us. And the second thing and last thing I have is, starting January 2025, our department's going to increase the level of training that we offer, not only is to our city team, but our community and citizens, and to enhance the readiness of our community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thanks to you and Captain Torella. Give you a round of applause. All right, moving right along, we're in our citizens' comments, and I see that we have Good evening, Ray. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Ray Lair, 5650 Southwest 32nd Terrace in the estates of Fort Lauderdale. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, Manager, and City Clerk. Thank you for being here. For the past couple of weeks, I've been going to PJ Mealy Park every Wednesday for their senior social, and I'm here to tell you what a wonderful job they do there. Vivian Campo, Dion, Jose, and Lane go above and beyond. When you walk in that room, you're, you're so appreciated, you're greeted, you're given. Every other Wednesday is breakfast and bingo, tomorrow is lunch and crafts, and they don't miss a beat, I'm telling you. They all need to be awarded. I also want to thank Joyce Davis for taking time out of her very busy reelection campaign to put these 17 amendments, charter amendments, into voter-friendly language that everybody can understand. That is so appreciated, and we thank you greatly. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lair. Any other citizen comments out there? All right, seeing none. Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda. Are there any items the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner James?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, the consent agenda passes. Okay, good work there. Okay, on to bids and requests for proposals. Hold on one second. Yeah, we don't have any bids and requests for proposals. No quasi-judicial and public hearing items tonight, no first reading ordinances. We have one second read, one second reading ordinance. Eve, if you could please read 12.1.
Absolutely. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach relating to the Public Art Advisory Board by amending Chapter 28 Land Development Code at Section 11-811-130, Public Art Advisory Board to clarify board terms providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and an effective date this community development. This is basically taking what was in the art plan and just putting it in for codification. No changes are changed as to the composition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner James?
I'd like to make a motion when you're ready.
Oh, this is a public hearing. Is anybody wish to speak on this item? Item 12.1. All right, seeing none. Commissioner James?
Like to make a motion.
All right, a motion from Commissioner James. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, 12.1 passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving right along, no discussion, impossible action. Appointments. Vice Mayor, do you have an appointment?
I've asked three people, and I've gotten nays on all three. Who do you have?
I have the one that we already, oh my gosh, what is her name? I have Lorraine, who's a part of Gracefully Aging, who we approved already, but then she reached out and she had some emergencies, so she had to back out.
Were you already approved for this once before?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. I'll forget her full name, please.
I gave you her information already. It was the one that I was giving to Marco, then I had to find him a replacement, but I saw her today at the breast cancer awareness event, and she says she's back and she's ready to serve.
Then that is perfectly fine with me, because I've had a very hard time finding someone to fill the seat.
I'll send you her information.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the...
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve the appointment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Good work, good work. All right, moving right along to Commissioner's comments. We'll start with Commissioner Davis.
I just want to thank the mayor for getting through this meeting so quickly. I'm so excited, I don't know what to do. So I will be brief to keep it intact with where we're going. I just want to say thank you to our incredible staff, administration for the Dania After Dark. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into that Oktoberfest, and even though it rained, people still had a great, great time, and so thank you for all you do to promote that, and people are excited for the next year already. Also going to say that about the 5K Fun Run, I did two events back-to-back. It rained at the Dania After Dark, and then it rained at the 5K Fun Run, but that, that just brings out the beauty of the Dania Beach spirit, because everybody still came out, no matter what. They showed up, showed out, and we still had a good time through the rain. So rain does not stop our beautiful community spirit, so I'm just grateful to everybody for putting in that hard work and having great times. I also want to thank, it was a tremendous help, and no other city. I'm reiterating, the city manager with the hurricane preparation, the sandbags, the residents were so grateful if anyone needed sandbags, and we, it was so well organized when we gave them out. But then also, to deliver sandbags to our residents ahead of the hurricane, I just really received so much praise for our staff and how hard our public services workers worked to get every single person served who needed it. So thank you for all you do in helping our residents and really going to the next level to support our residents in times of emergency. Even though the hurricane didn't hit us, we were prepared, so that was wonderful. I attended three breast cancer events this month, one at Tropical Acres with Gracefully Aging, which was absolutely wonderful. The social seniors, I will reiterate that, they do a wonderful job, and if you talk to them, bingo, it's worse than talking in church, so you better be quiet during the social seniors. It was absolutely wonderful, beautiful, a wonderful event, and thank you to the entire Dania Beach city staff who puts on that. Lastly, the breast cancer event today at the Chamber, another wonderful event. All the survivors were recognized, and it was a wonderful event, so thank you to the Chamber and Randy and everyone who put a memorial, I think, who sponsored that, and we had a really good guest speaker for that. So with that, I will close, and thank you, I just want to say thank you to the chief for getting, and the city manager for getting that traffic under control and adding that second deputy, because that was really a huge, that's going to be a huge game changer for our city. So thank you, everybody. So thank you, everybody, and good night.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner James?
No comment, Mayor.
No comment, all right. Commissioner Salvino?
Well, I'll take her time. Again, just starting from the beginning, you know, the Dania After Dark, the Oktoberfest, it, it was, it was a lot of fun, even though we were out there all wet and walking around. It's funny that if, any other event that we would have, if it's raining like that, there would be no one there, but put a beer in their hand, they'll walk around anywhere. But it was a great event, the staff worked hard, and the, and the people did show up, still, a lot of people were there, so anyhow, I want to thank the staff for putting together a hard, heartfelt program out there at the Dania Beach After Dark. The State of the City, I have to tell you that it was a great event. Mayor, you did a great job out there, you, you did a nice speech, recognized a lot of people, we had a lot of people there that are important to not just the city, but to, you know, the county area as well, and I think that we're well-recognized, I had a lot of people come up to me and tell me that, you know, Dania Beach is definitely a, a place to be, and has come a long way, it's evolved into a great city, and under great leadership, you know, right down from, you know, most of us are up here, and it's, we've built a great team together to, you know, to put forward a lot of good things for the residents of Dania Beach, the majority of them love what's going on, the city looks great, and we're in a good place, but you did a great job with your, your speech there, I was very proud to be part of that, thank you. I did go to the 304, they celebrate their 70, American Legion 304, they celebrated their 75th anniversary over there, made a little free buffet, which was, which was good, they had all home cooking over there, so, but I want to congratulate them on their anniversary. The Prestige Club event, the gala, I wish all of you could have attended that, you missed out, I have to tell you that they had, it was peace, the, the peace to the world, and it, it had a lot of beautiful, you know, characters and stuff, there were running around dancers and, and the shows and stuff, almost like a, like a Disney production, because there was like Disney characters in it, and, you know, they had brought the Stanley Cup out there, and people were taking pictures with the Stanley Cup, and they had, you know, just, just a good night out there, the way they, the, the work that went into that was completely amazing. There was myself from the city, and we had one staff member show up, Densery came out and was enjoying it, he'll tell you all about it, but it was, it was a great night. I want to thank everybody here, though, for, you know, the city's administration for getting us a table, we did fill a lot of tables with other, you know, staff, board members, so when we couldn't get enough staff, we did invite the board from the advisory boards, we invited them as well to come, so we got to be able to spread it out a little bit this time, and it was good, and then there was a lot of people that bought tables that were inviting people, so it was, it was, they danced and everything. Next time, I want you to go, because it was really, really a good time, and, you know, the year before, that was a casino night, you did, they put a good, a good time together. This afternoon, I did attend with some of Mayor James and Commissioner David, I mean, Commissioner James and Commissioner Davis, that, and Mayor Ryan, that we went out to the Chamber of Commerce Breast Cancer Event. It was definitely pink, I can tell you that. You have to wear sunglasses in there, but the event is special, you know, they just, they've, it was nice listening to the lady from Memorial Hospital, she was talking about, you know, some really new technology that's coming out, that now they don't even want to do the mammograms anymore, they're gonna be doing a gene, I believe she said gene testing that would tell you upfront that you would be able to have the, you know, the percentage of breast cancer you'd have, without having to go through all that, and early, early detections, so the advancements in breast cancer has really come a long way from watching from my family members on up to people that have had it, but it's, it was pretty interesting, you know, as a guy, you know, then they also say that the, I'll take your time, the guys, they said, look out for guys as well. Last thing, I did get, I did a couple, got a couple compliments, believe it or not, over the Southeast Drainage System, that they're doing, as they do the work over there, they keep cleaning up really, really well over there, and following up, clean the streets, making sure that the residents are, you know, trying to make them happy and do, so I want to pass that to the staff and to the adminis, you know, and to us up here, that a couple compliments have come to me, that's really nice to hear, because under construction, that's, it's always nice to have a compliment instead of something negative. So the Southeast Drainage System is on its way, let's keep going, and hopefully it cleans up in a hurry, and that is all, Mayor, thank you.
All right, wonderful job, wonderful job, Commissioner Salvino.
Thank you.
All right, I didn't know you had it in you. Okay. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I'm gonna be brief, but I do have a couple comments. One, we finished the core series, and I know there was some talk at one point about not doing it again, but then I heard some talk about it being done again, and I hope it is, because all the, there were some negatives to it, there, I think everybody learned a lot, and I think that there were an awful lot of positives as well, and it, it definitely is another way that we can communicate well with our residents, so I, I do appreciate it, I appreciate all the staff that takes time out of their own schedule to come and help with that, and make sure that they're out there informing the residents after hours, it means a lot. I, I too heard, have heard some really good things about the Southeast Drainage Project. I actually, the morning that the work started, I got a, a text message from a resident in the southeast who then sent me some photos as well, he was very excited, and it's so nice to hear the positives, but I will say, I actually, these days, hear more positive than negative about everything that this city is doing, about what our city team is doing, and how wonderful everybody is, and how, how happy they are to live here, and want to, and tell people to come live here, because they really enjoy things that are going on in the city and the way that we're doing things, so with that in mind, this is our last meeting as this commission, correct? Yes. So I want to thank the mayor and my colleagues for all really working hard and working together, and trying to find middle ground on things even when we don't agree, and I think we have seen that we can really make a difference when we work together, and we work positively, and like the mayor said, at State of the City, when we fight, we don't fight with each other, we fight for things, a lot of things, and we've done a lot of that in the last couple of years, and I really do appreciate that from everybody, and our city team is awesome, by the way, we have like the best city team in Florida. So with that, that's all I have to say, and thank you very much, and I think we hit a record tonight.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, yeah, as you can hear, we have been very active and very busy since our last city commission meeting, from breaking ground on the largest investment that we've ever made in our city with the Southeast Drainage Project, to preparing for an oncoming hurricane, getting our residents prepared, keeping everybody informed, all the way to our core meetings, you know, breast cancer awareness, celebrate, celebration, the, the lunch that we had today, what a Oktoberfest, you know, it's just, it goes on and on, it's only been like three weeks, two, three weeks, so it, it shows you, we are cranking out, and, and, you know, the State of the City was last week, and, and that's kind of what I wanted to say, is, we're, we're the place, you know, we deserve to be respected in this area, in this region, and we lead by example, and, and that's what we have been doing with our city staff, we lead by example as, as an elected group, and as a city ourself, as, as a city attorney, city manager, deputy city manager, we are leaders in this county, don't think any different. And, you know, it, it rises everybody up, and you could see, like you said, our residents are getting excited, they've always been excited, but now there's a couple more things to really look forward to, and I think everybody knows that we're in good hands, and we're gonna keep moving forward. So thank you, everybody, have a great night, meeting adjourned. That's it.